Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to the Select Board meeting, Tuesday, October 24, 2023, Wake Quot Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., 02649. Broadcast live on local cable channel 8, streamed live on the Town Mashpee website. It is 3:30. I'd like to convene the meeting in open session and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. All right, new business. Today we have discussion in the publication of November 7, 2023, election notice and possible remedial action relative thereto. If you don't mind, Mr. Collins, you want to start us off?
Yes, Mr. Chair and board members. It was brought to my attention last week through the town clerk that there was a problem relative to the publication of the date within the 30-day requirement in the newspaper. It is a technical error, but it's one that could cause serious ramifications if we didn't correct. So essentially, and I'll let the clerk elaborate, she brought it to my attention and I referred to bond counsel as well as general counsel, who is on the line. And essentially, there are two options for the board to consider in order to correct the deficiency. Number one is the legislative route, and number two, it's basically canceling the scheduled November 7 meeting and subsequently rescheduling a new election date. Representative Viera was sort of hijacked into a meeting. He was here for something else, and he was nice enough to come in to a staff meeting where myself, the assistant manager, the town clerk, I believe the finance director, as well as the treasurer were all present. And he actually got on the phone with Senator Moran's office, actually, I think it was the senator herself, and then in addition, reached out to somebody from the governor's office. I will let Representative Viera explain what that process entails if you were to choose that particular option. That's where we are today. My only concern with the legislative route is whether or not it's going to all be completed by December 1. And December 1 is essentially my D-Day as far as executing contracts to go forward for the purposes of bringing to town meeting what you have directed me to do for May of 2024. So I certainly would defer to town council, to the town clerk, and to Representative Viera so that they can get more specific in regards to the situation that I just described.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if you would, Deb, do you want to, or David Viera, you want to, which one of you may want to start with just, with the two options, if you want to both come up? Do you mind? I mean, from what I'm, what we just heard is basically we have two options before us. There's a legislative option, and that would be to push forward with as-is, from my understanding, and then the other one is just to reschedule it, and that's the other option. That's correct? So that's the two options.
The two options.
Deb, if you don't mind, just, you can might as well start us off, and then David can give us the legislative option.
Like the town manager told you, on Thursday morning, I was apprised of this problem. I confirmed that the problem occurred, and knowing the 30-day publish-and-post requirements, went down and spoke with the treasurer, and we got bond counsel on the phone and spoke with them as to a fix. And that's when I found out that a simple act of special legislation pushed through by Representative Viera and Senator Moran would be a simple fix. It's, it's not a life-and-death situation. It's a, an administrative error that is easily fixed according to bond counsel. They are the ones who sent us the verbiage for the special act to draw up the letter to both Representative Viera and Senator Moran, and a vote of the Board of Selectment requesting passage of special legislation. So, that is, and here is the Act of Special Legislation. I will say that if you choose to go with another, a new election date, it won't be able to occur before December 1. I have to have a written notification from the Select Board from a future meeting this Monday night, when you're meeting, to call for the, the next election, which be, would be a minimum 35 days, and I'd ask for a little bit more, only because I have the 30-day post-and-publish deadline I have to stay on top of.
Okay, step, to that point, back to you, Mr. Collins. Does that present a problem with the December 1? That would, sounds like it would present a problem for you.
Obviously, I'm, I'm trying to get this resolved one way or the other by December 1.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We're all meeting today, so we could have that discussion today. I don't see any reason we would have to wait until our next meeting. You have, you have a quorum today?
That's true.
And I believe we're talking about possible remedial action, so we could make that decision today.
Correct. So, good point. So, David, do you mind just?
Sure. So, when we had the meeting last week, I, I use the term ministerial in nature, because we see this quite frequently. Matter of fact, last Wednesday, we did this around another community's town meeting, where they had missed a posting for the town meeting, and so they ratified all the actions of the town meeting. So these votes always happen after the event, right, after the town meeting, after the election, but gives the legal standing to certify that everything happened. And before I was willing to, to reach out, I asked some questions. Your constable posted, according to their requirements. Everything material of the posting was in the posting. It just didn't make it into the newspaper of general circulation outside of the 30-day window. So in that meeting, we immediately, I immediately called the governor's office, and the Director of Legislative Affairs said, as soon as you have a decision by the town, send us the language. We'll get it in front of the governor, because this would be a home rule petition, but you don't have a town meeting to take a vote for a home rule petition, like you, you did with the land transfers, right? So the governor can submit on behalf of the community with their request. So that would be what town council prepared here, actually, bond council prepared a motion for you all, should you choose this option. That would then allow Senator Moran and I to go to the governor. The governor already knows about this, and I actually shared with her office today the draft pending your decision. Senator Moran and I then got immediately on the phone during the meeting. I explained it to her. She goes, I'm on board 100%. We'll do this together. I'll take it in the Senate when it goes. And then the last, the last piece was to put the lawyers in touch pending your vote. So we would have your council be talking directly to the general counsel of the governor's office. They'll turn that around, she said, they'll turn around in a couple of days, they'll get it filed over in the legislature, and then we'll push it as, as, you know, quick as we can, grease the wheels early on by going to each of the committees that it has to bounce through, through the process. We, we had a little Schoolhouse Rock 102, right? Because there's many steps to the, to this legislative process that we don't all learn in grade school, and so we went through the details of each of those steps and what we would do pending. Now, December 1, we meet every 72 hours in informal session. This does not require roll-call vote, so this could be done in an informal session on any Monday or Thursday when we meet throughout the recess that we'll have over Thanksgiving. Doesn't have to have everybody at Boston to take a roll-call vote. But going from one step to the next, I don't know that December 1 is a guaranteed date. However, as I said earlier, these votes are always taken after the fact to certify the action, and I'll defer to councils, but council could potentially put in those bid documents a clause that says, subject to this special act, right? So that the town is no longer legally liable should something go off the rails, which the governor's office doesn't believe that, I don't believe that, Senator Moran doesn't believe that, that anything would happen. It's just a matter of it going through the mundane ministerial action of committee to committee to committee to committee. But if you're worried about the town being bound through those bidding processes, you put a disclaimer in there that it's then subject to the act certification, and then, my understanding is it was like eight or nine months before the actual bonding was going to happen, which is what council's worried about, to be able to have a legal vote that can't be challenged, to be able to go and float the bonds.
I just want to be able to execute under the authority of the board any borrowing that's necessary in order to kick things off as planned by December 1. And this is obviously an unfortunate set of circumstances, and I'm, I really, really appreciated Representative Viera's cooperation on that particular day. He was hijacked right into a meeting. He was here to pick up something, and I said, oh, why you're here?
That's my job. I'm just glad I was here.
But having said that, I did get a little educated on every single step of that bill, from the first reading to the second reading to the third reading, and I was fascinated by the engrossing that occurs, I think, up on the fifth floor on typewriters. So I am really concerned about the deadline, and I, I just don't want to be held to that deadline that I can't possibly make.
So if, I'm, so I'm just kind of concerned with the feeling of like rushed and what-if, and where we could, as to Michaela's point, if we, could we not vote to just roll the date from November 7 to whatever date was appropriate for you, for you to meet your deadlines, Deb? At the same time, we could vote here today, we wouldn't even have to wait till Monday, and, and then we just move back to, you know, not feeling like rushed and just kind of like reset and then go forward, where we're not like hoping the legislature would come together. I'm assuming they will pull it together, and it'll be voted on. It just seems like.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And following up on what you're saying, we do have a tight deadline, and by going the route that you're presenting to set another election, we leave nothing to chance. The vote that was at town meeting would stand, and it sets us to, will have a definite time.
Right. And I, that's my only thing is I don't, and this is, mistakes happen, it's no big deal. It's just like, it's spilled milk, you can't do nothing about it. We just reset the, reset the deck, and here's the new date.
Well, I, I do have something I do need to bring to your attention. We have a number of ballots, absentee ballots, that have been mailed out, and I'm supposed to be preparing to start early voting next week. That's not the issue. I have paid for ballots to be printed. I'm already into this election for $7,000. You're asking me to spend another $7,000 to call another election when we have a simple fix? And bond counsel is actually the group that suggested we wait to forward this until after the election, when we know the results of the election. They are bonding this, they're not worried. They're, they actually were stating that this is a simple find-and-replace piece of legislation, that this happens every ti, a lot of times. It's never happened in Mashpee before, but it does occur throughout Massachusetts.
And I'll just mention, that recommendation from bond counsel, on our end, I would rather, if you're going to do this route, I want to file this next week, and then if the election, based on the outcome of the election, I can just stop the legislative process, just say, well, we don't need the bill if it doesn't pass, right, versus waiting till after.
All right, so I do have one question. Deb, like, what about the people that got their ballots? Some people already received ballots.
Right.
Correct?
Right.
And were some people told those ballots are now invo, those?
No, I have not said that. I have heard on social media that there is a movement that we have a new election coming, and they were coming to me, and I said, at this moment, we are not having another, a second election. We are scheduled for November 7. I never advised any absentee voters that this could change.
So what I'm afraid of is, I think there is some confusion out there in the social media, and if people, some people may have disregarded this ballot already, knowing that this meeting was happening, and, and it's, it's unfortunate, but social media has a, has a play in this. And in social media, there's, it's out there that we're changing the date, and that's why this meeting is being held. So I didn't put it out there, but it's, it's out there, I heard it, and that would be very unfortunate if people cast away their ballot because they're waiting for another ballot that's going to be legit, and what do you, what do we say to those people that say, wait a second, I nailed mine in? What about those people that?
They are starting to come back.
Mr. Chair? Excuse me. One of the things I would suggest that we could do is to be in touch with those residents and send them the new ballot, and, you know, let them know that there's a new ballot coming, that, or even if it's, if it's sent in, if it's not valid, you don't need to count it. So they would have the opportunity to receive a new ballot. And I understand that mistakes cost money, and it's unfortunate, but I, we're not, with all that's at stake, and all it will cost us, if we miss these deadlines, a new election is, is small. We're looking at forfeiting 0% financing, we're looking at forfeiting forgiveness on, on the principal. I, I don't think we can leave this to chance. I think leaving it to chance disregards the almost 600 people who voted for this town meeting.
At risk, if I may, is a lot more than $7,000. And I'm not poo-pooing any cost, because I obviously want to be the safeguard of all taxpayers' money. I don't want to ever foolishly spend it. But on the other hand, I'm just really, really concerned about not being able to get in by the deadline that GHD has discussed. And if I don't make it, I just want to make sure that you're fully aware, these are the potential consequences.
Right. The safe and sorry.
You know, when I listen to this, we have Dave Viera, who I've known for years.
Microphone.
So Dave Viera, I've known for years. I, I trust him without question, and he's making a recommendation. He knows that the system works, he knows he can bring it into the, into the State House, and he, and he feels 100% that this is going to move forward. And I said, this is what we need to do. We need to just make it simple, move it forward, get the, get the okay from, from the State House, and we're all set. That's it, and everybody's happy.
Hold on a second, just, just.
Mr. Whedon has his hand.
Okay, one second, just to clarify, that's not what I heard from, from David as well. I did not hear it's 100% guarantee in.
So, so it's, it's ministerial in nature, right? So the first thing is the governor has to agree. The governor's already on board. The second thing is the House and Senate have to agree, the senator and the rep. Senator Moran's already ready to sign a letter if it happens. The question is, what is the timeline? What I'm not 100% sure is that December 1, the governor will have signed the full authorization, and that's why I mentioned, and I know council's on the line, could you, in your bid document, say, subject to the final certification, so that you continue with your timeframe? And I was told by your finance team that you're not going to go out to actually look for money for like eight or nine months. That was the window I was given last Thursday. So unless something's changed, and no one talked to me, because I didn't get the documents till this morning when I asked for them last Friday, but I got them this morning, I shared them with the governor's office, and I was told last Thursday that you don't need to bond for another eight to nine months. Is that accurate, or am I under a cloud of misinformation from the meeting we had Thursday?
Well, if you remember, I did ask whether or not it could be guaranteed, and there was no guarantees. And again, I appreciate everything that you said and did. In regards to what I was told, I was told I would not be able to execute without that final vote.
Okay, so there's, you can't put in the bid document the disclaimer?
Well, I haven't spoken to town council, who's on the line.
All right, real quick, I'm going to go to.
Because we do at the state, we do subject to availability of funding all the time.
David, I'll get you in one second. I know, Ms. Chairman.
Well, listening to the, the two options, the second option on the table is to us to redo the election. Then it's in our control, we have the vote, and we can be sure that it will be done by December 1, right?
There's no way that I can get this election.
It is October 23 today, right? 30 days is November 23.
No, no, no. 30 days is the posting date. So that would mean I have to probably get it into the paper Friday.
Mm-hmm. Yes, Friday.
If you don't have a problem spending another $7,000, we have a fix. Everybody's on board with this fix.
But they can't guarantee December 1, Rodney's date.
You, hold on, you have to remember, in November, we have a holiday coming up. When are we going to have this election?
35 days would be November 28.
Which would be?
That would be 35 days.
35 days, the November 28th, what day of the week is that?
I believe that's 35 days. That's a Tuesday.
Tuesday, November 28th.
If I'm counting correctly, and I'll look again.
Is that after Thanksgiving?
That's 35 days.
All right, so real quick, I'm going to go, Mr. Whedon.
How long do you need to print the ballots?
David, you on the phone?
Yes.
Okay. Floor is yours.
Uh, I just, you know, I, I kind of have a problem with us governing, taking into consideration and, and being reactive to social media. You know, social, social media is a platform for entertainment purposes and things like that. I understand that, you know, we're able to go on there and personalize and observe kind of comments and things like that, but I, I'm afraid of, you know, the precedent it sets when we start reacting and making decisions as a result of what's going on on social media. There's no way to validate the information, I'm not sure of the representation that you're speaking of and things of that nature, that, I mean, you know, there's all kinds of fires all over social media. I'm not about to start, you know, letting that sway my decisions to what I think is right. We're hearing from the members of the, the town clerk's office that we're $7,000 into this already, we have things on track for November 7, and we have our, our representatives at the state level, you know, moving, moving and grooving, you know, pulling a lot of strings to try to make the November 7 work. You know, if they're willing to do it, we have our bond counsel also making the recommendation that this is a standardized approach to rectifying similar situations. I think, you know, I, I don't understand the need to postpone when it seems like it's more heavily weighed towards the thing on the November 7 date at the recommendation of folks that are familiar with the process and legal experts on procedure relative to the bond council's recommendation.
Thanks, David. Pat, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to chime in on your professional opinion of?
Sure, sure. Everything I've heard thus far, Mr. Chairman, is, is accurate. Let me just reiterate, as I think everyone's acknowledged, this is a really minor defect, in my view. I, I don't envision there being any real issue or difficulty having this approved, as Representative Viera has, has indicated. Well, the hang-up is in the process, and the amount of time it's going to take to get through that process. But just so everyone's assured, there's ample case law in Massachusetts that says the result of an election will not be upset or, or changed by virtue of a minor procedural pre-election defect. So I think downside of going forward with the election as scheduled in November with the remedial act, legislative action in process is probably the most, in my view, advisable way to go. We could schedule a new election. As the town clerk had noted, there's a tight timeframe for that. I think that is the process that we would have to follow if we wanted to scrap the November election and schedule one later on. By law, we have, we have up to 90 days for the dead exclusion vote. That's not an issue. So we have plenty of time. This, this deadline of December 1, this is the first I've heard of that today. And as Representative Viera indicated, we certainly could, if we're issuing requests for bids for contracts and the like, we could put a contingency in there that the funding is subject to not only appropriation, but also ratification of the, the election vote. If the process is well underway by that point in time, I don't think that would be much of a deterrent to prospective contractors. I, I would concur with the recommendation of bond council that we seek the remedial legislative action and stick with the election as scheduled. The thing that concerns me the most in terms of potential problems down the road is, as the town clerk has noted, there are already ballots being cast for the, for the election as scheduled and as noticed. I, I don't want to, I'd rather not mess with the electoral process than put some contingency language in, in a general contracting document or seek an extension. I, I'm not quite sure how hard and fast this, I assume it's an SRF deadline, how hard and fast it is, although I, I have in my experience had such deadlines extended before by, by DEP under, you know, exigent circumstances, and I certainly think this would qualify and such. I would recommend going with the legislative route myself.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I just want to clarify one thing, because I see the finance director is here. She had indicated that I wouldn't be able to execute anything until this is completed. Correct?
I believe that I do not. I believe you have to go up to the engineering service. I'm not sure if that's correct or not.
We probably should have you come to the mic.
Craig, you want to be up here as well? Because this is per the financial advisor.
I don't mean to be offensive, but if we don't mind, just try to keep it as short as possible.
Absolutely, yeah, no problem.
Try to.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
So, first of all, contracting, if Pat, you know, the, if general counsel says that, you know, there's, you could sign contracts with a stipulation for the funding, I would defer to legal as far as that goes, but as far as signing a contract for this, the 7.5 million, it's a one, one-piece deal. You can't just say, well, we'll use the free cash portion, the $3 million, and if, if the response isn't back by December 1, and you wanted to sign the contract. Per the financial advisor, it's, it is a $1 figure, 7.5 million. The way it's funded, okay, we're going to do part free cash, part a bond authorization, but you can't say, I'm going to go sign the contract knowing I've got three, knowing I have 3 million on hand without definitely having the $4.5 million.
And, and that was my sole concern, is not being able to sign by December And that was my sole concern, is not being able to sign by December 1.
Right.
And I've publicly said it, so I will shut up.
Is this when the document has to be signed, just December 1st?
Well, we're talking contract versus bid, I believe. You know, that's the other thing. I think when it was referred to as a bid document, that that could be signed, but I don't, I'm not positive that this has to be something that goes out to bid. As far as engineering services, I believe it is exempt from 30B. So, this is more, in my view, what I was under the understanding, it was more signing the contract, not bid documents.
So signing the contract December 15th, is that not possible?
That would be whoever we are contracting with, I believe the issue of December 1st is having enough time to have all the engineering and design completed to go to Maytown meeting, if I'm not, that's my understanding.
Because I know we're gonna be under the time crunch for that. You know, I don't know, this is, who would've thought this was gonna be like this?
I think what we need to keep in mind, again, and with all due respect to Representative Viera, whose help, and I know if you were steering this through and you could do it yourself, I have no doubt it would be done, the process is still cumbersome. Both branches of the legislature have to act, and I know there's been some informal conversations, and I appreciate that. Both councils have to act, the governor has to sign it. We could be way, way out with this. We are so tight time-wise, and as I said, we had a resounding vote. People want us to move forward. If we wait another year, prices, and that's what, we miss a deadline, it's gonna require another year's wait. Prices are going to go up, we don't know if there's gonna be 0% financing, and we don't know if we'll have the forgiveness. So I think there's too much at stake to, despite everyone's best intentions and hard work, which I deeply appreciate, I think there's way too much at stake to take this to chance. I just do.
Is...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I couldn't see who was talking before Michaela, was that Ms. Fair?
Oh, it was Michaela.
It was Dawn.
Dawn.
Oh, that was Dawn.
No, just now, I think.
Just now, I was speaking, David, and then Dawn.
Before Michaela.
Dawn. Dawn, there.
Yeah. I just, you know, want to kind of point of order. I think, you know, getting into the weeds with all the contracts, so I think that just further supports the legislative route. But at the end of the day, I think the question before us right now is, are we gonna move forward with the November 7th date or do the delay? That's kind of, that's what we're looking at. And, you know, I think everything we're hearing, I feel like we've heard enough to kind of move forward based on recommendations. I don't know what the delay is in hesitation to, you know, taking the vote, and I'd be willing to make a motion to move forward with the legislative route as recommended, and take any other actions related thereto.
Okay, so that's your motion, David?
Correct.
All right.
So, let me ask you this.
Well, hold on.
Can we do these both?
We can have a discussion, but he has a motion, so does he have a second, and then we can discuss? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
All right. Are you seconding?
No, I'm not seconding.
Okay. Do I have a second for David's motion? All right, so...
But you have a call for a motion?
Motion, call for a vote, Michaela. Well, actually, there's no second, so it's nothing.
Okay.
So, sorry, David, motion failed, but I think we just need to discuss a little further. You're not wrong in what you said. I guess, you know, back if we stay the course, David, can we go forward with contracts without, sign contracts without having legislative approval?
My question, that's your lawyer.
Lawyer.
Yeah. Pat?
All right, look, this is the first I've heard about contracts, Mr. Chairman. What exactly is a contract that has to be signed on December 1st?
This is in reference to any paperwork that was gonna be prepared by GHD relative to going forward with the remainder of Phase 1 and the remainder or into Phase 2.
So it's a design services contract?
That is strictly designed, yes, and it's exempt under procurement law as a result of engineering.
Again, I...
In terms of any of these asterisks that are being referenced, I agree with Representative Viera. That's your question. That's not, that's not for me. I am just trying to figure out whether or not it can be signed conditionally, because I had been told, and in good faith, might I add, that I couldn't do it. So if I couldn't do it, then, and all of a sudden, something gets screwed up and we can't get to May 1st as planned, I don't want to make that fall onto my shoulders.
Rodney, what is your opinion on which way to go? If we go one way, it costs the town another $7,000. And I know you're a stickler with money, but this is a problem that needs to be rectified. What is your opinion?
Well, I always like to control things, so...
No.
But I think Pat needs to answer the question relative to signing on, because I'd like to know that answer.
Do you want to speak?
Pat, so can we sign these contracts with, without final approval from the legislature?
Yeah, in a perfect world, I'd love to see the contract before answering this question, but I would say yes. One thing I can tell you, Mr. Chairman, as I noted earlier, I know that the law of this Commonwealth is that minor procedural irregularities preceding an election are very highly unlikely to have any effect on the election outcome. That's based on case law, that's been well-established. So I, again, I, nothing changes my initial recommendation that we proceed with the legislative route. On matters such as this, I've been in this business for 30 years, I always take very seriously recommendations from Bond Counsel, this is what they do, this is their niche. Bond Counsel has recommended that we proceed with this route. I've seen the materials that Lock Lord has prepared for the board's consideration. Based on Representative Viera's assertions, I mean, I certainly understand there's a process at play here, but if the governor's office has already been contacted and is willing to recommend this legislation as a generally routine ministerial matter, I would be hopeful that we can get it accomplished on it before December 1st, knowing the tight timeframe we're on, and that message being delivered to the general court through Representative Viera's office and outside his office.
Okay, thanks, Pat. I will take maybe a couple of public comment. I know Andy's been asking, raising his hand very patiently, so Andy, if you want to come up on the public comment, just, I'm gonna ask if you can keep it very brief.
So, have the tape running, because I agree with Dawn. Whoa, how was that? What passed on town meeting was a contingent authorization subject to a valid dead exclusion. You don't have an appropriation that's valid right now until, unless that legislation were to pass and an election approves it. So you can't sign contracts and begin expenses without a valid authorization. So, you know, forget all this about bids and all that, it's immaterial. You've got a contract that you have nothing you can charge against now. The reason it's important, and December 1, as Manager has mentioned, is important, is GHD is charged with providing you a construction cost estimate. They need to get into the field, they need to do the work on the ground to come up with the estimates, so that you have as precise a construction cost to go to town meeting with as possible in May. The longer they have to wait to get a valid contract, the more error there is potentially in their construction cost estimate, and the more cost exposure you're subjecting the town to. We're talking about, you know, potentially, a $7.5 million contract and a potentially $80 million project, the cost variability that you're building in by not moving with certainty and giving them as much time as possible dwarfs the $7,000 that might get spent due to this unfortunate error. So the best thing, in my opinion, you can do, and Dave's right, he's done a great job, he's done exactly what you want your state rep to do, is to maintain control over the process. 35 days from today, if you vote to change the election date, is the 35-day window that the Town Clerk asked for, November 28th, which is before December 1st. So you have in your control the ability to keep on schedule, there's gonna be some messiness associated with it. Some people have ballots. I have returned my ballot already, all right? So send me a new one, I'll refill it out, not a big deal. We know who has requested ballots because she has a record of it, so it's not that hard to contact those folks. These are some honorable problems. Waiting for the legislature act with everybody's good faith is a risky proposition, because you have Thanksgiving holiday in the middle of all this, you have thousands of other bills, many home rule bills, nobody controls that process. We all know that. We've had, been subject to waiting for legislation on home rule petitions in Mashpee for periods of time that exceeded our expectations in the past. I don't know why you'd want to put this at risk when over 90% of the people that showed up at town meeting said they wanted you to move. You've got an option you control, take it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, are you looking for a motion?
Yes, can you hold on one second?
Certainly.
So, just to clarify, no offense, David, I really appreciate you coming in.
It makes my job easier, actually. I'm only here to help the town.
Yeah, I know, so...
It makes my job a lot easier to not have to bird dog in 30 days a piece of legislation, but I'm willing to do it, because that's what you elected me to do.
And I just wanted to say, thank you for coming in and...
We appreciate it.
Thank you for that, thank you for being here, and I appreciate that. Thank you for everybody, and I'll hand it over to Michaela.
I move that we reset the election, change the date from November 7th until November 28th. Second.
Okay, I have a first and second, any discussion? No, Tom? David? No? Okay. All right, all in favor? Kayla?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Rodney, is procedurally wise, do we need anything else, or is that...
Just check with Counsel while he's right there.
Pat, is that all we need as far as procedure-wise while we're here?
You voted to call for the election, so the wheels should be turning, and that now work at the Town Clerk's office to make sure all the paperwork, the ballots, the notices or whatever are promptly issued and properly published and posted, and you should be good to go. Yep?
Okay. Thank you all. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second. Thank you, David, very much, for your time.
Meeting adjourned.